Nobody has a problem with this agenda? We've got a vote on it. Entertained a motion to approve the agenda. I'll move. Second. All payers say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Agenda's approved. Okay, we turn it over to Dr. Thor now. He's gonna present the budget.
Dr. Thor?
Dr. Thor.
Dr. Thor, are you prepared for this?
Yeah. I can wait.
I got it right here.
Yeah, how you gonna get it out there? Dr. Earl, sorry.
All right. So, after, you know, meeting with the Budget Committee a couple of times, I mean, I, you know, I generally, you know, when I start to prepare a budget, you know, I start with last year's audit. And you don't even really need to use that. I mean, they have a whole bunch of worksheets for you to use that automatically fill in the forms for the documents that you actually pass, two of which we actually, you know, the Board has to take action on tonight. So, you know, I start plugging in those numbers from our audit from last year and then we guesstimate where we're gonna finish at this year because we have to have this done, have to have all this work done, you know, before we have those final, final numbers for the fiscal year just passed. And then, you know, then the big ones, of course, is the, is the planning for this current fiscal year. We start on September 1st. So, I just kinda put some generic things together and for the Budget Committee, just for people's, you know, information. I prepared about four different budgets. You know, one that is almost exactly status quo, which is essentially a status quo levy, trying to keep the levy just essentially status quo. After valuation, of course, we gotta wait for valuations, which aren't certified till the 20th of August, right? So, that's the big, that's the, when you get that information, you finally have all the information you need to start to prepare a budget. Okay, our valuations went down just under 3 percent, just under 3 percent. So, a static levy would generate less in property tax revenue. So, you kinda know that, some of that information, then you start to work. Okay? But Kelly and I spent some time kinda projecting, you know, some things for, you know, what we're maybe looking at and what our personnel expenses are gonna be, which is 75 percent of our expenses, which is set obviously between the Board and the PPA, you know, two years ago, day near two years ago, you know, that, that figure was set. So, 75 percent of our budget for this fiscal year was pretty much set a couple of years ago, when, when an agreement was reached between the Board and the PPA. That's just, you know, that's the way it is for every school district essentially. So, you know, the things that, you know, you really kinda make some decisions on, you know, which is a small piece of the pie, actually, is what we met with the Budget Committee. And so, I prepared a few different options. I said, here's a, here's a real conservative one, if we wanted to cut, you know, you know, cut right down to the bones, and here's a status quo, and here's one maybe a little more ambitious, if we start thinking about, you know, more, more likely, if we're thinking about facilities, or if we're thinking about maybe a one-to-one initiative, which could have some additional expense compared to what, maybe what we've had in the past. Okay? So, we try to, you know, project that and think about that. And so, meet with the Budget Committee, and they say, hey, what if, you know, can we do this, can we do this? And I can plug numbers in as we're talking, and they can kind of adjust some things. And mainly, out of the hundreds and hundreds of numbers that are on my budget worksheets, there's really about three or four that we focus on. What's our tax asking, what's our levy? Okay? And the general fund and the building fund, because those are the only two areas that we're gonna levy. We could levy a CUCIPUF, but we don't. And CUCIPUF would be for life safety needs that we might have. So, for example, if we had mold, we could levy funds to clean up mold, or if we, if we wanted to put together and build an ADA ramp on the south side, we could actually levy funds to do that. But we don't need to, because we have a lot of levy authority, because we're well below the dollar five limit already. So, CUCIPUF really doesn't apply on us. So, we really only have two levies to be concerned about. The general fund, which again is set for the most part, because you have, you have utilities, and you have personnel expenses, and you have transportation expenses, those things are just gonna happen. Okay? We gotta pay for it. Okay? But we don't necessarily have to pay for refurbished doors, which if you look around, most of them are on. We don't have to air condition, you know, this, that, or the other thing, or those guys. Those are the decisions that Boards make on what will affect, you know, you have a little more play in, in a levy. So, the, the Department of Education requires you to have an exact balance, and Trent gave me a good question today, and it took me, you know, a couple of years of putting budgets together to kinda understand, why do we, why does it, why does it show this number? Why do you have to put this number here? Well, your, you have, your revenues and disbursements have to balance. And so, whatever you expect your disbursements to be, you have to show the exact same revenue, you know, in the bottom half of your worksheet. So, you essentially have to budget all of your resources. And so, it almost looks like you're spending millions of dollars more than you really are. But what it, it just, what it really shows is, you know, here's, here are your total amount of resources, and you have to show that on a budget sheet. So, for example, the good question was on our activity account, and, and we happen to have, and I don't know if it's an anomaly or not, but this last fiscal year, we generated gate receipts at a pretty higher clip than we did the previous year. So, we had, we had that additional revenue. We subsidized that account by $60,000, which we maybe didn't need to. And so, we actually boosted what ended up being our ending balance for the year, which we had to carry over that ending balance. So, we started with a healthy ending balance. And then, if you notice in your activity, if you look back at, at your activity ledger, you notice our FFA and our interest, those two have doubled in income over the past year. And so, that shows in the bottom line, our activity count, $125,000 ending balance. Okay? And now, I have to show to spend all that. I have to show that as a disbursement, since that's, since that's in our revenue half, I have to show that as a disbursement. Now, are we gonna spend that? Well, we, you know, I mean, in some way, shape, or form, but it doesn't mean that, you know, so I mean, that's, it's a great question, and it shows on, on this sheet, and most of the numbers on this sheet are just really gonna confuse people. It's your tax request, which, you know, I can wrap my mind around just a little bit more. But, so that's what we're given to work with, and again, it's taken me a few years, this is my fifth budget I've prepared, and so, even though you only do it once a year, you start to get a little more savvy and understand a little bit more. I shared my budget with two people for support, Craig Pease, who I've seen every year since I've been a superintendent. I just sent it to him, he looked at it, sent me back some ideas. I didn't go sit down and visit with him for three hours like I've done in the past, and I, I wish I had, because I enjoy spending time with him, I learn something new from him every year. But this year, it didn't feel like I had to. Sent it to Janice Arret, Department of Ad, she shared with me something that, that was helpful. So, just for example, the, the Department of Ad Revenue and Education Committee is looking to kinda pull the reins on school districts and the amount of money that they can carry over from one year to a next, to the next. So, your, your, your spending authority, you know, would, would, you would actually have more spending authority for every year to here, and so, they wanna trim that. So, she said, Darren, I want you to do this, and this, and this with your budget. Now, it will show that you're not gonna have any carryover next year, but that's good, because they might take that away from you anyway. So, I was able to show that in a disbursement, and so, it's part of our budget, and it, and if we don't spend it, then we won't. We have carryover, some carryover every year. This year was a hundred and some thousand dollars. Okay? But if you have the Unicamroll, next year, they could do something, and then we would find out next year's budget cycle, where we don't have access to that. Last year's, you know, prior year's, let, carryover funds. So, visited with a couple of people, so, you know, I, I hope and think and believe that the budget, that the Budget Committee, you know, said, yeah, this is the one we wanna take to the full board. And that's what I'm gonna share with you right now. So, I just do the groundwork, and I, and you expect me to know a few more things than you do, and find out a few more things, and I certainly hope that I have. But the budget that I'm gonna share with you with, also with, with a lot of trends that we're gonna look at very briefly, is the one that Mr. Sauer and Mrs. Hanks and Mr. Rassellson have had a little more time to look at, and that we've met on a couple of times, and this is the one that they're recommending to you. So, I've got a slide for each of these. Okay? So, there's what our state aid has done. You know, this is just a visual, and the specific numbers, you can tell a little bit from the left-hand side. So, we've ticked up a bit from $31,000 to $35,000. Doesn't make a difference, but I don't know, it's a, it's a, it's a new teacher salary without benefits. Okay? So, so there's our state aid line. You can see down in 1617, we're at 237 bucks, but, but this is what most rural schools' state aid trend line has looked like for state aid, to be honest with you. So, property valuations have done that, so if you lay that over the, the state aid a little bit, you can kinda see how that is affecting that. Obviously, it's leveled off, ticked down a little bit. Again, we went down just under 3 percent in total valuations. Analog went up, Knox went up, but Pierce went down, and drug everything down, because we get, well, just over two-thirds of all our valuation comes from Pierce County. Okay? Tax asking trends?
Why is that?
We have more landed, more property at Pierce County than we do at, school district area has, has, most of its land in Pierce County. Okay? So, there are your tax asking trends. The general is the blue. Okay? Building, and then the total. So, this is, you know, what the Board has done over the past several years to afford some of the projects, the facility projects, that we've undertaken in the past five years. Okay? And that's a result of this. We're at 1.5 cents the year before I came, and this budget is gonna ask for 9.6 cents. Okay? And every cent, you'll see, generates about $70,000. Okay? There are your levy trends. So, during, during the valuation spikes, the levy, you know, the, the Board chose to bring the levy down, as most school districts did, certainly appropriate, I mean, those are local decisions, to bring that levy way down. So, we were, we were over a dollar 10 years ago. Okay? Your total levy asking tonight, it's gonna be about 66 cents. Okay? So, there are just a lot of numbers, and so, so it goes from, from here to here to here, to there to there to there, and try to show from one year to a next, the percentage of changes. So, we probably spiked in valuations in 1617 at 747 million, almost 748 million, probably not gonna get back up there. I mean, it just seems like the trend has certainly leveled off and slightly, you know, dipping slightly. And then, you know, obviously, the, you can see what, how that affects your, your taxes, you know, that it, that it generates, and the percentages, and sometimes it's minuscule numbers, minuscule percentages, less than, you know, just about half a percent, for example, in the taxes generated, decrease this year over, over last year. Okay? So, your levy rate, based on our current, current property valuation, about 715 million. Okay? Each one cent of levy would generate $71,500. Okay? So, every penny is $71,500. Okay? 1 percent goes to county treasurer, and generally 90 to 94, because all the taxes don't ever come in. So, you really, we're really not gonna get that much. Our levy is 715 million. A penny will generate that, but not all the taxes are paid, county treasurer's gonna get a piece. So, our tax receipts are about $64,500 per penny. Okay? $64,500. So, we're gonna, you know, well, and that's whether it's building levy or general levy. Okay? So, every penny on the levy's worth about $64,500. In the general fund, percent of budget spent at end of fiscal year, and we've been watching this since our first budget last fiscal year, almost, as soon as we bought that van and wrote a $40,000 check. Our total budget was slightly smaller this year. So, stands to reason that our, our percent of budget spent, which was about 91 percent this year, percent of budget spent. So, as, as the budget gets a little smaller or stays static, you know, your percent spent is gonna go up. Okay? General fund budgeted, and again, these are showing all revenues that we would have in the district. And the general fund tax asking. So, this is probably a pretty good slide, too, you know, to share with stakeholders, that we've asked for la, less taxes, you have asked for less taxes to run the school for the past three years. Okay? And the tax asking in this budget is the lowest since 1516. Okay? And everything goes up, and everybody understands that, and everybody knows that. So, you know, you, you know, sometimes you'd stand to reason that everything, every year, you're just gonna go up 3 percent, because everything goes up 3 percent. But we've done some things intentionally, and maybe some things other, maybe also unintentionally, that, and again, our general fund doesn't have anything to do with air conditioning, the 1920 bill, or, or the elementary project. That $2 million project is not part of this. Okay? That was all run through building fund money. And we took some depreciation, I should take that back, we took some depreciation money to pay for the first quarter of that. Okay? So, asking for less, I mean, a half a cent, or a half a percent, I should say, half a percent. Okay? So, estimated revenues. Okay? And again, these just come straight off of the worksheet. Okay? And this is our carryover. So, this is actually our cash in the bank and cash at the county treasurer. Okay? And, you know, that's a figure that, you know, school districts can use to bring down your levy and bring down your tax asking. Okay? Other major funds, so balances in all the rest of these, and, and the rest of these funds, you know, are, are these. This shows the payoff of the two bond payments that we still have to make.
You go back, go back to that slide, where's that $2 million carryover? You actually have to show that we're gonna spend that, if you're correct.
We have to show this in a revenue. Yes, it's showed in a revenue, so I have to offset that with disbursements.
Even though we wanna have them here, but we have them here, you still have to show that we're gonna get rid of it.
So, essentially, you know, you can ask for less in property tax requests. You could ask for less, because that's gonna be down in the revenue, that's gonna be in the same sheet as this. So, I could ask for less, we could, the Board could ask for less in property tax requests, and then I could show, I could balance that off in the disbursements, you know, on the top half. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a bit complicated, I guess, after, after a while, you kinda understand a little more. But you do, I do have to show this as a revenue, therefore, I have to balance that same amount out as a disbursement, where most of that just goes to, you know, personnel. I mean, I can show that, you know, our personnel expenses.
Most of those are million dollars in bank, or, or depreciation, come off of that, right?
No.
Oh, it is?
No, this is not part of our appreciation.
No, it's not part of that.
It isn't. That's just, that's cash in the bank. But I have to show that we're gonna spend it in my disbursement column. So, that's what's gonna elevate your, your operating budget. Okay? So, the other funds in this, you know, these are, again, come, you know, from the AFR, so I mean, these are actual numbers from our AFR last year. Our audit is coming up here in a few weeks, and so, in a couple of months, we'll have actual numbers for, no, these are actual numbers, these are guesstimates. Okay? So, our audit for this year is coming up. So, you know, we show total resources at 9.5. Not, that's not, I can't, I'm shocked, basically, on here. Okay? So, here's the first, this is your, your budget hearing sheet. You know, and again, there's a lot of numbers on here that, you know, I, I wish weren't part of this document, because people might say, we got an $8.3 million budget. Well, you know, we, you know, we're gonna disperse $8.3 million, that we're not, but we have to show that to, to offset that same amount of revenue. Okay? But these figures came from that last slide. Okay? But this is the one that goes, these are the two figures that go over to our tax asking document, and then combined with your valuation, et cetera. Okay? So, that's, that's your budget sheet.
Why does the county hold some of it?
Why is the county?
Yeah. Didn't you say that the county holds?
County gets 1 percent?
I know, but didn't you say there's some money that they hold?
The county treasurer's balance?
Yeah.
Yeah?
What do they hold that for? Vicky, what do they hold our money for?
It's just like a collection fee.
So, then it's, it's not ours to come back and get?
No.
Okay.
It's a penny cash jar.
The penny cash jar?
Or any money.
Okay, we'll move on to questions and comments from the Board, and after that, we'll open it up to patrons. So, right now, we'll just have discussion with the Board, if there's any questions, as they like felt like. You know, like Dr. Earl said, he, he gave us about five different options when, when the first meeting. We didn't like any, any of them, we had to make another one. But we just kinda felt as a committee that we didn't wanna raise taxes. I mean, to me, I, I like to look at the asking, evaluations of the levies, take care of themselves, it's, it's what we spend and what our asking is to be. And I kinda wanna hold that the same. I didn't wanna raise taxes, even though the levy's going up, but if you're one of the lucky ones, your valuation went down, your taxes won't go up. And we still feel like we've got some projects we wanna do within the school, so we didn't wanna drop that building fund levy till we, till we get through what we kinda wanna do there yet. So, but yeah, we wanted to hold pat as much as we could, so we had him come up with one basically that was the same asking as last year. And that's kinda what we decided on, so. Instead, we held taxes pretty flat for six or four years in a row now, so I think everybody kinda gotten used to that, and expected to end on quite a few improvements. We wanna do it. And people can see what we've done, everything, walk in the building, it's not like our money's set in the bank, we haven't done anything with it, they can come in here and walk down the halls, do a lot of things. Notice that we spent the money, we've used it, we aren't just sitting on it, we're wasting it. So, I haven't heard any complaints from anybody on what we've done with facilities, maybe you guys have. So, that's, that's kinda what our thinking was, and why we wanted to stay the way we were. So, is there any comments or ideas, like, it's not set, it's still in, we can still Krista, Tim, and then, you wanna add to that committee?
What's our average cost per student, based on this?
Okay, and we're about $14,000. I mean, and that, depending upon any variables that you throw in there, I mean, that can, you know, change dramatically, if you're just using your, your general budget, your total budget, operating budget, I mean, there's, so it can change a little bit. And the state, and the state ranges from anywhere from $8,000 to $100,000. One school district, I think, Loop County, $100,000 per student. So, it's, yeah, we're close to average, we're right in that belt.
Palm Hill's pretty, I do think.
Who's that?
Based on our past experience with Palm Hill and their budget, they'd be, they'd do what they...
I, I don't know what Palm Hill's...
Or they're always high, or they're... So, are you guys okay with what we've kinda proposed here? Is that kinda what you're thinking, or? Okay? If there's no more questions, I'll open it up to the District, the patrons. If there's any questions out there you'd like to ask about this budget?
Just one clarification on the, the building levy, that's completely separate from this budget, is that right, or no?
It, it is.
Or does it, this includes the building levy?
No, you'll see that on the next slide.
Okay.
Yeah, during the, in the tax asking.
Anybody else have a question?
I think what you've done with the buildings are great, I hear nothing but great things, how everything looks. I heard a lot of comments today, grandparents today, how clean everything looked, and how bright it was. So, keep that in mind, more projects, you can do, you're really keep up with it.
Yeah, I walked over there this morning, I had to grab some keys, my daughter-in-law, after she was already at work. It was probably the first time I've walked through that building since the air conditioning and stuff was done during the day, the school day, and I just, I mean, it just jumps out at me, yeah, how fresh the air is, so, so, it's not stale, stagnant, it's moving, so. Okay, so there's no questions out there, we're going to adjourn this meeting. Okay, I'm gonna call a special hearing to consider the tax request meeting to order with Plano Public School District, and I have a motion to do so.
Move.
Second?
Second.
How's that feeling?
Crassmanston and, uh, Rock.
Either one, yeah. Okay, so first and second, and all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries, meeting is open. Open Meetings Act is still posted on the door back there. Roll call, Krista?
Here.
Dr. Thor?
Yes.
Myself, here. Wyatt?
Yep.
Tim?
Yes.
Everybody is accounted for. First item is to approve the agenda. Does anybody have any questions about the agenda? No? Entertained a motion to approve that?
Move to approve meeting, yeah.
Second?
Second.
First and second, and all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries. Okay, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Earl to do a presentation of the proposed tax request.
Just one slide here, and I wanna say to, to Vicky, of course, Vicky was very much part of the, kinda the push to, you know, improve facilities and such, and, and so, Vicky's leadership has certainly been very important in, you know, the past several years, and taking that building levy from a penny and a half up to nine and a half cents, because that takes, that's, that's a tough, tough boat, you know, to, to ask for that. But if, if, and, I think folks see that that money was spent wisely, so I think that's what we're gonna do with it. So, here's your tax request sheet, folks, and, and it looks different than in previous years because of LB 103, which was passed by the state legislature, to make sure that if evaluate, this would've been appropriate maybe about 10 years ago, when valuations were starting to spike, and school districts were saying, we left the levy the same, we left the levy the same. Yeah, but, but because our valuations went up 15 percent, they were, you know, making all kinds of, so they said, we didn't raise taxes, we left the levy the same. Well, but they generated so much more tax. So, LB 103 was passed last year by the Unicamroll, and essentially, it was designed to make sure that school districts weren't reaping the benefit of a simple valuation increase. And then, you know, they could even drop the levy a little bit, and, and still generate more in taxes when those valuations were spiking. And so, LB 103 requires you to lower your levy, if your valuations go up and it drags your tax asking up with the exact same levy, you're required by the law to lower your levy, so that you don't generate any more tax revenue than you did the previous year, just based on a, on a valuation increase. Now, you can, the Board can still choose to do so, but you have to have a whole special hearing in a special forum to say, no, we are going to raise taxes even, we're gonna let the levy raise our taxes. So, there's a few more columns on here, but really, the only ones that are highlighted are the only ones that matter, you know, on here. Okay? And it's last year's information, which is right here. Okay? And then, this year's information, and this is what the Board, this is the, the budget, the, the taxes generated, and the levies that the Budget Committee is presenting to, to the full Board to consider tonight. So, the property tax request for the general fund is actually gonna go down $23,646 in this budget compared to last year. So, asking for less, okay, which is a, just over a half cent percentage, I'm sorry, a half a percentage less, asking for just, so, I mean, it's, it's fractional. Okay? And in the building fund, asking for $6,060 less this fiscal year than last, which is, you know, almost 1 percent. Okay? And then, the total tax asking, $29,706 less in total tax asking this budget compared to last. And what's that, due to the levy? Due to, even though it's asking for less money, this budget's asking for less in, in property taxes, because the valuation went down 3 percent, the levy actually ticks up a penny, even though it's generating less in tax dollars than it did the previous year. So, the proposed levy for the general fund, 57 cents compared to 56 last year. Proposed levy for the building fund, 96 cents compared to 94.
Oops.
Oops. Now, how we do that? There we go. 0.096, you can see it up here. Yeah. Yeah, nine point six cents. Nine point six cents. So total levy of sixty-six cents compared to sixty-five, so it's a, it's a penny and two tenths. A penny and almost three tenths of a levy that's generating less tax dollars, so. The, this is the column that, of all the numbers in all the budget docs, these are what gets for them. Okay, so that's your property tax slide information.
Okay, open up to questions and comments from the board. Again, I don't know, I think you guys understand how levies and valuations all work, you know, somewhat, as long as your asking stays the same, like the county sets the value and when you ask for your asking, then the levy states what it has to be. You gotta remember that some people, this is probably going to raise some taxes for, but some people it's going to lower the taxes, but that's not our, what we do is decide whose taxes go up, whose valuations go up and just go down. That's the counties that decide that. And we don't have anything to do with that, so. So yeah, some people's taxes are going to go up, but it's not because of us. It's going to be because the, the county has changed valuations, moved them around, raised them, lowered them, whatever. So I know in Antelope County, one of the things was grain bins. They changed how they taxed grain bins, so most people pay more taxes on their grain bins, so their valuation went up just because of that. Not that they're any different than they were a year ago, they just decided to tax them differently. So things like that, we don't have any control over, so. Am I right, Vicki, calls on that?
Right.
So any, any other questions, comments?
And again, if you want to share with the board, because the building levy is the one you can take down to zero if you wanted to. You can take it up to fourteen. Uh, it's the one you can live without, i- if you wanted to. But we discussed, you know, the next several years and really what are, what are still some of the, some of the facility needs that we're looking at over the course of the short term and, and long term. And there's a sheet out there that existed before I came, and, and we've still kind of used that and looked at that and moved some things around. Uh, and, you know, one of the, the, the projects that was bypassed this year that we want to consider next year is the, are the lights in this building, the lights in the ceiling tile and the grid in this building, okay? Uh, and we knew that was a four hundred thousand dollar project. Bypassed that for other things this summer. Perfectly reasonable decision to make, but that'll still be there next year. I mean, we'll let, you know, so will we be able to consider that? Is that, how important is that? Uh, the track is kind of risen up in, in, into an area where, yeah, we're going to have to deal with this. We're in, this is a, a, a six-figure, getting close to maybe a seven-figure project, depending upon, you know, what we find out and, and if we want to fix it for, for good, 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 not just for another ten years and then deal with it. Um, you know, so that's still there. Do we have boiler issues coming up? We need to anticipate that. And so, you know, we, we kind of listed those and kind of looked at those and thought, yeah, it's still, it's still necessary to try to generate some funds in the building, uh, in the building fund and try to maintain pace. We still have, uh, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay on the elementary project, four and a quarter each of the next two Junes. Uh, this budget will, will allow us to make that payment easy and still afford, you know, several hundred thousand dollars in, in other facility projects. Uh, something like the track would probably require a plan for two or three years maybe though of generating some building fund money. You don't have to pay for that unless you wanted to do a lease purchase type like we did with the elementary. We don't have the bucks now, but we're going to put funds towards it for a couple of years, so we'll need that, that, that building fund levy to do that.
Okay, there's no more questions or comments from the board. We'll open it up to the patrons. Any questions out there, comments?
Is there any other priorities besides the lights? I assume the lights would be a priority since you guys recently discussed it, but the, the lights, the track, is there anything else?
Oh, there are. Um, I mean, I guess I would hesitate to speak maybe for the Building Grounds Committee.
I like the art room, for instance.
Yeah.
The air condition, air quality is horrible in the art room.
We've got an art room issue. We probably have a, a little bit of a health safety issue maybe in our shop with ventilation, so what, how do we address that? Uh, we've talked about a music room, which, you know, can maybe use some modernization, so that's been discussed and is the space appropriate.
Is that just all ventilation issues though? Like I knew, I thought they did some work in the, the shop and the music room this summer.
We did. Lighting, lighting and, and air conditioning. We didn't air condition the shop shop though. So the shop shop where all the work is, where all the sawdust is, that just goes in the air into the floor, and so, I mean, that, so. You know, tho, those are some things that have been on the, it's a higher ticket items maybe that are on the list. We probably have several ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollar needs that just every school deals with on a routine basis. Uh, we just paid five thousand dollars to have one of our rooftop units looked at. Five thousand dollars for, you know, I mean, so we could have a boiler go up. Now that's a, about a six-figure, uh, that you just need to be prepared for. So that's probably a discussion later. Building grounds probably needs to re, you know, meet again, probably, you know, something to obviously in the next few months, kind of prioritize again and start thinking about, you know, next summer.
One of the music room issues was more acoustics, something to do with the sound.
Oh, okay. That wasn't necessarily ventilation or?
No, no, not the music room. The ventilation was, is more just the actual shop area. You know, so that's.
You're going to have a gap paving project bill that's going to be coming in.
We're going to have upwards of a hundred thousand dollar gap paving expense.
Possibly.
Possibly.
Watson Building is still a wise in the back of our mind. I mean, there's nothing cut and dried there yet, so that could pop up.
Just curious about the general.
Yeah. I don't think that there are any commitments to next summer. The only expense we have next summer is four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on our third payment on the elementary. That's the only commitment to building fund.
Spend the rest of the money between now and then.
I find some.
So.
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, when you talk about the carryover money, is the building fund in that carryover fund?
No, that's just general fund.
Okay, and so there's nothing that the state could come in and take the building fund?
No.
You're like, okay, that's new.
No.
Believe about that bill. You don't have to spend it every year.
Yeah, okay.
They try to, they, they've, uh, they've talked about trying to restrict it, bringing the fourteen cents down to several school districts. Uh, who's close by? I think Bloomfield has fourteen cent building fund levy. Um, uh, they just made, you saw in the World Herald that DC West built a new school without a bond issue. O'Neill built a new school without a bond issue. They're doing that with building fund funding and lease purchases. And that's essentially what we did over at the elementary. That elementary project was the most expensive project in the history of the school, paid for with a lease purchase through the building fund. Um, so they're trying to, uh, restrict it, so they might try to drop it from fourteen cents to twelve or ten even. Wouldn't affect us. But no, the state can't come and take monies that a school district has levied on its tax patrons, even if it's levied and, and left in the bank.
Okay, there's no other questions or comments. We'll adjourn this. Anybody need a break before we move on? All right, we call meeting of the Plenary Public School District to order. We'll all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll entertain the motion to declare an open meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
First and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Meeting is open. Open Meetings Act is posted on the door back there. Roll call. Krista?
Here.
Dr. Thor?
Trent?
Here.
And Wyatt?
Here.
Myself, here. First thing we'll do is approve the present agenda, and we'll start with the agenda. If they have any questions about the agenda for this. Okay, if not, we will move on to the minutes of the last meeting, August twelfth meeting. Very well done again by Kelly. We'll move on to the financial reports.
You can see our Madison County CD is due, uh, this month, actually in nine days. So I did receive notice from them that the rate's not yet been determined, so I do expect it to be somewhere in between this one, six, nine, and two point oh. Now, they did ask us, they did visit with them. Uh, they did say, you know, you can actually make more money if you put this in a checking account. Now, checking accounts can have more volatility, so it could drop below. You lock in a CD for a year at a time. Uh, but right now a checking account is accruing more interest than any of our CDs. Well, okay, I mean, I don't know if that's ever been discussed.
Didn't they say how much? I mean, is it just point zero zero one, or is it a substantial amount?
Uh, no, uh, but it's, it, I know it's over two. But then.
Yeah. Well, we can always pull it out of the CD whenever we want to, in the penalty if there is one, so.
Unless it's a, a flex, you can pull money out of a flex, which we have a couple of those.
Well, it's something I'll have to, I'll have to get the information off, I'll decide on next month.
Well, it's, yeah.
All over.
You know, again, yeah, I don't, it matters not to me. It's, you know, district's money, you guys decide what you want to do with that.
You know, Eric, you're talking possibly a quarter point drop, half point drop, but if that, I, I don't know, it's going to stay above two, I guess I'd.
Probably go out the margin, that's the difference.
No, they don't, that's a wonderful margin for it.
That's what we know.
Something to think about.
Do they need to change the signature on that? And that's the end.
Did they what?
Did they need to make that one to get their receipt adjusted?
She didn't ask me.
She's not anywhere.
She didn't. Oh, yeah, got it. She's got it. I did visit with her about that, but I haven't seen anything. She didn't send me.
So what happens with that money starting the eighteenth until we have our next meeting? So just set an account somewhere or?
Yeah, yeah, it just, that, that will adjust automatically. You know, like I said, between one, six, nine, and two.
But, but we don't want to re-lock it in until we talk about it, probably.
Like they get locked in on that.
It does, it automatically goes on.
It does.
Yeah.
So we won't have an option, something different.
Well, I mean, that's. No, that's.
Is it not automatically locked in at whatever rate you're at right now?
Well, it had for a couple of years until.
You asked?
Until, yeah, it doesn't make sense that you have to ask. You would think it would adjust based on the standard rate, but.
So as long as you ask them, they'll say, I want a higher rate?
I'm just talking about if the checking account is, you know, if that's three percent versus the savings, if it's two percent, it might be something to look at.
So do you have ten days?
From the maturity date?
To make your decision, Krista, do you reserve more?
I, I don't know. I thought it was, I don't know.
I think, yeah, it needs to be ten days.
I think it's ten days as well.
It still won't get us to our next meeting, but at least you can find out, it notifies, if we have to do something quick, we'll have to do something.
I mean, it'd probably not.
Right, I don't think so either, but. We'll just have to leave it that way. Okay, so now next month, this percent budget, it should drop back down to twenty percent.
That'll be in our, yeah, first budget of the next fiscal year, will be next month.
So the one of both, that's been written, right?
Yes.
All three of them have, have to.
Yep.
Correct answer.
Is it all going to do it?
Oh, you're, you're eight sixteen?
Okay, I'll move on to the claims. They say the gate on a volleyball game was over two thousand dollars in Tere's account.
Well, there's a whole bunch of season passes we purchased.
Oh.
It's like, wow.
Your first half game.
First volleyball gate usually sets a range for the year.
Yeah, a question, a stupid question, so what kind of, uh, first aid kit do we need for two hundred and fifty-one dollars?
For what, yeah, I do this.
Athletics, yeah. Who's sporting it? Midkit or volleyball?
Would have been something that it's can't be paid for, so, uh, I don't, I don't know what's on.
Could have been supplies with it. Could have been a new med kit with supplies.
Probably something they carry with them.
From my point of view, it better be pretty good for two, there better be a lot of stuff in there for two hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Do you have a bottle, have you? I bought one for my folks, I think twenty-one hundred and has a staple kit. Apparently you don't get money for it. You get Band-Aids and several ones for a few hundred bucks. Very much, I don't care if you get it.
Mike, we got to go voting with you.
(laughing).
Just take whatever.
You got a little cut?
You got a surgery, you better have this, you better have that.
That big chunk for the school nurse, is that something every year?
Yeah, yeah, that's our expense for a halftime nurse. This time every year.
The rest, you know, that was fixing your kitchen then?
Yeah, my rooftop unit. Every, every time they come, they find something else that they need to come back for, and I'm not necessarily questioning, because I know there's thousands of parts of those things. Uh, but it just seems that we could be more efficient. We, we being them when they come.
But that's only about half of what the rest of the work is, is not to fix it.
No, we still have it.
That's not what you're talking about.
Big fix is still a decision that we'll have to make. We're kind of just getting through this cooling season. We'll have to make that decision before next summer on whether to spend eleven thousand to fix or thirty thousand to replace.
That was a whole.
I, I don't know, like, pressure.
Something free on, wasn't it? Free on deals sometimes?
Something that costs eleven thousand dollars to fix, but, and of course, you can fix it, but the thing is X amount of years old. You wouldn't put that much into, you know, just like your, your auto, you decide whether to put five thousand dollars into a ten-year-old car.
Can you explain? I know this is when I signed the check, so I'm going to ask the question anyway, the, in the custodial, custodial account, anyway, the other employee benefits, flex money, staff, what exactly is that?
Each, uh, each employee gets two hundred, each certified employee gets two hundred and seventy-five dollars in flex funds, and I believe that came about, I don't know at what time, before our time. And it's when vision care was dropped from their health.
Could have been.
So I believe the, the, and Chad, you might even know.
It was before me, but it was when they let the deductible jump up, if I remember correctly. Was that when I first got here, or is that two? Two-something, and, but our deductible is real low, and then they let the deductible go up, they let the deduct, deductible go up, they said, well, we want two seventy-five.
Okay.
And they said, okay, because we, I think the deductible jumped like six hundred dollars. It was a huge amount of money.
Just to offset that.
Yeah, to offset that. It's on the contract to allow that to happen.
Yeah.
Made it cheaper for the school to do the insurance then, more than the amount that they gave us for.
So every certified employee has two hundred and seventy-five dollars of reimbursed medical expenses throughout the year, so, you know, it just offsets those.
And a hundred and fifty for the full time.
For full-time classified.
For full-time classified, yes.
So Kelly just runs that through there, so you see a big, uh, revenue for that, and then that'll throughout the year, you know, Kelly works claims for teachers every day.
And she's just taking out the custodial account?
Yes, you, so that's where you pay those out of then, Kelly?
Yes, I would.
That's where you pay those out of then?
Yes, now, now that, a completely different account. That check is written from the general fund account to the custodial account, and then I take care of the custodial account, and they have a submit receipts, um, to me and Dawn, or to get the money back. And then there's also the, the votes, the, the additional funds taken from their check every month for that purpose, because it's getting four tabs.
How many teachers do that?
There's several.
Several teachers have pre-tax monies go into that account. And it all goes in this month.
I saw the list anyway when I, I looked at it.
So the teacher has a huge medical expense in September. Okay. They could have several thousand dollars in, in, uh, flex funds. In that, that, that they're essentially taking from the future checks, but it's to pay off and then reimburse.
They can also add like, uh, dental and eye insurance too, can't they, which is at their own cost and then pull that out.
Yes, anything that is a single would come out. Uh, also daycare expenses, so it's not just unreimbursed medical, so if you have children in daycare, you can pre-tax pay that through the. Yes, anything past the single would come out, also daycare expenses, so it's not just unreimbursed medical, so if you have children in daycare, you can pre-tax pay that through this account.
Got it, thank you.
What's the black, the backflow football field?
Well, it's this device that has to go on the hydrant down there that we use from the city, of course, for years and years and years, we just had free water, but then the city's like, wait a minute, we're gonna put a meter on that, so that we had to pay, uh, and then there's this backflow valve, I don't know what it is, but it's a necessary device required by law, well, one afternoon, Kirk came and said, I gotta take that backflow valve, because Black Hills needs it where they're building their new thing, well, that's when it quit raining, and we had to water the field, but we couldn't water the field without a backflow valve, so they said, we gotta take this one, it's more important over there, you gotta get your own, oh, okay.
Backflow, so that they make sure the water doesn't go back into the water system, any type of, your houses are housing plays, you're supposed to have it on, their mine doesn't, I set something one time, long time ago.
You're on camera.
That's all right, it's, it's, it's supposed to be on your house, so maybe it's going back into your house.
City was kind enough to let us use theirs for the past couple of years, uh, because they put that new hydrant out there, I think, two summers ago.
And now they're charging us for water also?
Yeah, so we had to hustle and get one of those, it's, it gives some water.
Well, say, so we have a road, and we're about.
I suppose, yeah, I mean, honestly, I didn't even know that it wasn't ours, to be honest, they're, they're saying, well, the city's gonna take care of the new business.
Hope it'll make it rain, this breach. Okay, another question, something, is that agenda? Ron, I want our team to vote for it.
I'd like a motion to approve it, is that agenda?
I'll second it, first and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Can you just have a public comment, anybody want to speak tonight, I'll read this, okay, put it out before we get to the next chair. Number eight, committee reporter, it's budget committee.
Just if you have any final comments, before we get to action items, I guess that's, well, no reason to put that up.
Jim, the Christie, I am.
I think you said very well.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, number nine, American Civics.
Okay, so, our, our Americanism Committee is now called the American Civics Committee, and, uh, I think I shared with you last month, the month before, you know, they, uh, there's a new, a new law that requires, uh, school districts to make sure that they are, uh, their materials are promoting American patriotism, and that, you know, you're, you're promoting Americanism as much as you can in your schools, which seems to go against, you know, a lot of things you see out in culture, you know, we're gonna offend people if we're too American, you know, I don't know, but, uh, the requirements of the American Civics Bill, uh, most every school is already doing, so they just kind of spell out, they make sure you do this, and this, and this, or there's one of three requirements, you know, you have to give the naturalization test to your eighth graders and to your seniors, uh, kids have to do one project on, uh, something that promotes American ideals, or you have to do a report on a famous American, I mean, we do all those things in social studies, every school practically does, okay, but one thing that I did notice on it is you have to have three members on your committee, and we only had two, so, Mr. Salzer needs to appoint, uh, somebody from the board to be the third member on the American Civics Committee, which must meet twice a year, so, somebody's gonna get appointed to this committee and get an additional meeting between next.
I already have.
And the winner is?
I already came up with a name, but if somebody would like to volunteer that wants on this committee, I'll give you that chance, right now, it is. Dr. Thor and Wyatt, yes, so you two can't volunteer, but either of the rest of you would like to be on this committee, now's your chance, if not, congratulations, Trent, you're on the least capital money committees of any of us, so you've been down now.
Okay, so I'll send out a note, but Wyatt and Trent and Ken, Doc, Thor, we need to meet at six thirty, before the regular meeting next October, so we'll just meet, just right before the meeting. Mrs. Thompson and Mr. Schmidt will be here to report on what we are doing to meet the, uh, American Civics, Americanism's bills requirement.
So don't you read all of those projects that kids do in this committee that night?
Yes, that is the one.
That's why the school were being.
That's why we're meeting at six thirty AM.
That, I, it is, sorry, it is October fourteenth, so that's the latest that's, October fourteenth at six thirty, but I'll send out a, just meet here.
I lost it, so we do.
Okay.
Okay, number ten, discussion items, Watson Building.
So I was contacted by a prospective buyer of the building, uh, who's working with Al Raji in Norfolk, uh, he only wants the front half, and he, of course, you gotta buy the whole thing, and so Al told him, plenty of public schools, they talked with us about purchasing it, they were kind of interested in seeing the shop area, and using it as a learning facility, and blah, 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 and so, uh, he gave this gentleman my name, he called me and he said, hey, if I buy the whole thing, would the school be interested in just leasing the shop space? I, I don't know, I guess it depends on what, what that amount would be, but, uh, so there's a potential for, to, to not purchase it, but to just lease the space from the owner, who only wants the front half, to turn it into a business. So, not something that need, obviously needs to be decided today, but, and I'm waiting to hear back from him on his, after he's doing some negotiations with Alan, so he finds out what, but it's gonna be kind of a triangle, difficult thing, because again, this board probably can't move that fast to decide, I mean, but probably a discussion that needs to happen, okay, if we were interested in this, what would the school district be willing to pay, and then, what are we gonna use this for?
See, is the equipment still there?
I do not know what's in there, I don't know if they took the, the lifts out.
I'd be surprised if they took them out.
I don't know, they left with those guys, they just kind of, I mean, one day they were wrong, for the most part.
It's probably a mess, you know, no doubt, but, anyway, I said, oh, sure, I'll take that to the board, it's he.
He's kind of on a time limit, because he wants to do that exchange, property exchange, you know, so he wants to get it traded before that, so it's, he's maybe on a couple of months, well, yeah, six months, I think.
Hundred and eighty days, I think, from the time of sale.
Time he bought his business down there.
Doc, Thor, do you know anything more than we do?
What, what kind of businesses can be the part of it, you know, any idea? It's eBay, but just.
Maybe an auto supply.
Okay, all right.
And it's a group of investors in Norfolk, from what I have. So it could kind of tie in with that.
Sure.
So I'll try to stay on top of that, and maybe, uh, you know, building grounds, maybe you should start thinking about next several months, and then to and through next summer, maybe, uh, if this budget is passed, you know how much money you have to deal with in the building fund, or how much, you know, so you can make some plans, maybe, as you know what your revenues are.
Any idea if we lease the space, is he willing to reconfigure it, remodel it to our needs?
No, we don't have any. I doubt it.
I doubt it.
It wouldn't have a classroom, it's heat, this is not.
Yeah, yeah. Depends on whether they want that parts crew back, that goes with them or with the back, that would return to the classrooms, but yeah, he wants that, whether that's gonna shrink down the rest of.
I think a lot needs to be answered, there's, a lot of, we might be able to lease it, but there's gonna be a lot of money put in it, to bring it up to code, to bring it up to hair conditioning and heating, and just, I don't know.
Who's gonna pay for that, if we're leasing, they should pay for it, yeah, a lot of details. Okay, number eleven, review board, policy series four oh three, employees and outside relations.
Okay, I, I don't have any recommendations for language change on any of the four oh threes.
So is it a crime to not report?
Yes.
I mean, for any of us, if we saw something on the school.
Uh, board members, are they mandatory reporters? I've never heard of, in many years, you know, that's, that's a, that's a proof, I suppose it could.
I just wondered, you know, sometime you see a principal chasing a student down the sidewalk, is that child abuse, or is that trying to keep the school, or, you know, where does that fall?
Depends, is it one of us?
Yeah, if they have a taser gun, I would say.
Throwing things at it.
Yeah.
So can you explain this fundraiser deal, how that?
Yeah, in fact, that was a relatively new policy, uh, that was required, it's because of crowdfunding, which I don't know a whole lot about, crowdfunding is a way to try to generate funds through the internet, so it's just, it's just trying to, uh, do some, it's like robo calls almost, just throw a whole bunch of something out there, and see if we can get something in return, so, this policy is similar to the one that it replaced, but it added crowdfunding, which, you know, is just something new that's sprang up, that the unit can't, we'll say, oh, we need that.
So does it have anything to do with, like, selling cookies or anything like that to raise money for?
Those are all mobile decisions.
Okay, there's no more questions on that, we'll move on to the action items. Twelve, discuss and take possible action on adopting the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school budget. Open it back up to discussion by the board, if there's any more questions or comments, we're moving on it. If not, like to have a motion to approve it.
I made a motion to read out the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school budget as presented.
I'll second that.
First and seconded, myself, yes, Wyatt?
Yes, Tim?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Doc, Thor, Kristen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, our second action item, or thirteen, discuss and take possible action on approving the tax request for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, any more discussion by the board? Comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the tax request with twenty nineteen, twenty school year as presented.
Second, I'll second, Kristen?
Yes.
Doc, Thor, Trent?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
So?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move on to the reports, and fourteen, activity directors' report.
Ms. Ray must not have been able to come with this.
Mr. Bree is having, he had a pre-op meeting today, he's having, he's getting a whole new knee, Mr. Schmidt?
Knee replacement.
Knee replacement, uh, next week, so. It's probably gonna be out, roughly two weeks away, is what I did before, but.
He's been writing a lot, he's in bad shape.
Yeah, yeah, is, is it the same as his ankle, same leg?
Yeah.
So that leg is just healing from the ankle surgery in the summer, but I said, fix those wheels, because we need a lot more years out of it.
So who will be covering this?
Mrs. Ling about it, will be covered in the classroom, but everybody else will pitch in on athletics.
Okay, number fifteen, principals' report.
Okay, so I'll go first, um, math growth testing, we started today, um, in both schools, um, testing should be finished by September twenty-third, and that's with makeup testing, um, this year, we will not be testing science for third to fifth grade, since science is not counting, um, for the state, um, we will still test sixth grade, though, um, I did talk to Brandy, and she is still kind of iffy, though, with the fifth grade, so we may, we may still decide with fifth grade to go ahead and test, so that's still kind of up in the air, um, Acadians, uh, is what used to be Dibbles, so we did Acadians testing in kindergarten through sixth grade about a week ago, and so Steph Lundgren came from ESU eight and trained all of the new teachers, and that used to take about two weeks, because teachers did all of their students, and we knocked it out in one day, um, so we just got a team, and we, about five of us just hit every classroom, and it was awesome, um, so this year, in accordance with the new Nebraska Reads Initiative, we do have to send letters to any student who is not reading at grade level, so those letters will be going out, um, there are, let's see, twenty-seven students in, um, kindergarten through third grade, who will be getting letters, um, which is not, it sounds like a lot, but that's not bad, with the summer slide, it's really not, and when you think kindergarteners, they've never taken this test, and we're asking them to tell us the initial sound of a word, instead of asking them to tell us a letter, so, this is a test that's completely foreign to them, um, so I would imagine by, heck, if we gave them the test right now, they'd probably be just fine and pass the test, so, um, by parent-teacher conferences, they'll be just fine, and I'll make sure that in the letter, it's worded that way, so parents are not concerned, um, let's see, accelerated math and accelerated reader, I worked really hard with Heather Miller from Renaissance to lower the cost of the program that we've been using, so the initial quote that we had was over six thousand dollars, and I got that quote down to about three thousand four hundred, there is no AR in the secondary building, that doesn't mean that we're not pushing reading in the secondary building, there's just no need for AR over here, and AR is a lot of lower-level questioning, and, um, it's just not needed over here.
This was a twelve thousand dollar bill two years ago, and.
Yeah.
Had this gotten down to thirty-four hundred, and that was wasted, and thirty-four hundred we will use, thirty-four hundred is what we used several years ago, but we paid twelve.
Yeah.
We were paying for stuff we didn't need and weren't using.
Yeah.
Was there an option back then?
Yes.
There was?
Yes, it was just being rolled over and paid.
Yeah, so, I mean, I just, every, every bill that she sent, I would kind of nitpick and nitpick and nitpick, until she finally just. Okay, what will you pay for?
So what do you do, like, when you get up to the seventh grade and they're not at the reading level, since we're not doing AR anymore, or?
Well, and I don't think it's a matter of them not doing AR, um, I think, honestly, it's, it's a matter of building a love for reading at the elementary level, um, and if you're building a love for reading at the elementary level, then they're gonna continue read, that love for reading over here, and they're gonna continue wanting to read over here, and then it's just having those incentives, um, and I've talked to teachers over here about different ways to incentivize reading over, over here, um, but it's about building that love over there, um, and really, with AR, yes, you're, you're finding their reading level, and you, you can start with recommending books at their level, but I would never hold a kid to the fire and say, you can only read books at your color dot. But I would never hold a kid to the fire and say, you can only read books at your color dot.
AR is actually the worst thing to do for a kid in junior high that doesn't read at grade level.
Absolutely.
It's the worst thing to do, so.
I know, I'm not saying AR, but, I mean, we all know how important reading is.
Yes.
If a kid doesn't read at grade level in seventh grade, they're almost certainly never going to read at grade level. Once they get past fourth grade, it's, it's virtually impossible to catch them up. So if you get them to a, thankfully, a fourth grade leading, reading level, you can function in society. For the fourth grade, now can you excel in society? No, are you going to go to, you're going to go to a four-year university and be successful, but, no. But if you can read at a fourth grade level, you can read well enough to do your shopping, uh, to, you know, read a, a simple chart, map, road sign, whatever, so that's the, that's the hard truth on it. So a seventh grader that doesn't read at reading level, we just continue to put materials at their level in their hands so they develop enough confidence, you know, so, so that they can, you know, get a diploma with the seventh grade reading level or whatever, that's the real reality. You're still providing support.
My hope is that we're not seeing that because we're ingraining it over there, you know, with, with parents who are reading to kids and with a library who is encouraging a love for reading and, you know, getting those kiddos who, who maybe don't like reading, finding their interest levels and giving them books that they, you know, a graphic novel, most kids are going to love graphic novels, so finding their graphic novel that they're going to like, finding them a sports book that they do like.
Well, I mean, it just makes, like Dr. Earl said, we, we have to do something to help them.
Absolutely.
To get a book.
Absolutely.
We just don't want them to be able to buy groceries and read.
Right.
Treats like.
Well, and we also don't want a program that requires them to reach a certain point and then level.
Yeah.
If they don't reach that point, we don't want a program to stop their love. So, we don't want it to get in the way either way. So, um, but either way, that is, that's purchased now for the year. Um, McGraw-Hill and Pearson orders, you know, for some reason, those orders were very funky the previous year. Um, so Pearson, uh, for social studies, those orders have been completed, uh, for whatever reason, fifth grade was completely left out. Um, so we, that's why there was a bigger check for social studies textbooks. Um, so the, that year is now complete. Um, they haven't been received, but I believe they are on the way.
I'm just there.
Um, and then McGraw-Hill, we did science and geometry, those were just online codes that we had to order. We are still waiting for some kindergarten materials as well. Um, but then once we get those things, so those will be annual that we have to order, but it's, it'll be very minimal, uh, maybe two hundred dollars annually for online codes that we need for our teachers. Um, and then the last thing is cognitive coaching training that I have, um, been able to go to, it is awesome. Um, so it's eight days total that I'll be able to go to and I've gone to two days. Um, so it is at ESU eight, so I'll be going to Neely. Um, it's been very beneficial for, for me as a principal and as an instructional coach. Um, the first two days were just really about, um, reflective listening and, um, rephrasing, so paraphrasing and, I don't know, it's been great. I'm excited to get the rest of the training and put it to some use. I promised I wouldn't talk long, you're up. Yep, yep, sorry.
All right, secondary wise, uh, obviously school started, we got things kicked off with the school carnival, which was awesome. Um, if you follow us on Instagram, Twitter, all that stuff, we had, we try and socialize a bunch of things and get, get our kids out there and what we're doing with the school. Uh, we did meet with ESU, um, looking at additional services that we can, that we can try this year from them. One of them, for example, being Ed Ready, it's a program that they have that we can provide additional services to students. So say they're struggling math, we can give them online math, uh, modules so they can get extra work and help them get caught up. I know we've offered that with one student already, so just trying to find extra ways to provide kids with things that they need.
So is that stuff they can do at home?
Yep.
Online and do at home too?
Yep, so it's all online and it's based off of, so like the one we have is in math, so Mr. Boyer and I set it up. And for that student, we can send out, uh, different modules that that student can look at that matches the lessons that he's teaching. So basically, it's just a reinforcement for whatever he's doing in class. Um, and it's another way for them to see how, how to do it, I guess, another avenue for them to look at.
Does he have to put computer home from school then, or can they pull it up on their computer?
They can pull it up on their computer, yep. Staff development day on September fourth, we had Katie Morrow come in and she led our staff with different technologies. It was about two and a half hours, she talked on Google exclusively, talked about Google Docs, Google Sheets, Classroom, all those things, gave our teachers a plethora of things to look at. Um, she will be back in the elementary on the seventeenth, right, September seventeenth, she's here all day to interact with them. She's coming back on the eighteenth to work with our high school teachers. Um, so really, whatever they're trying, they can question and answer and stuff like that with her. Um, we released a school app for the webpage, if you guys haven't seen it, so you can go to your app store and download that. It makes navigating the webpage a lot easier. Last week, Dr. Earl started some mission Monday stuff with us as teachers, um, asked us to reach out to previous students that had an impact on us and this week, we have, um, teachers taking pictures of the students who are getting engaged in different learning experiences and they've been sending that to Mrs. Thompson and I, so we've been blowing up Twitter with those things. Um, just kind of showing what's going on in our classrooms and the different experiences our kids are having. Uh, I asked all the secondary staff, and I know she asked elementary staff, to use Plan Book for our lesson plans, so it's all digitalized. Um, and it's all, all in one place, so we're able to look at all the different teachers' lesson plans, what's going on, what standards we're reaching, uh, what should be getting taught and that way it can validate whatever we should see in the classroom when we walk through. Implamation of technology, uh, Mr. Souser, the laptop carts have been empty constantly. Uh, teachers are utilizing everything we have and using it on a daily basis, um, whether it be for simple reviews, lessons, assignments, whatever it is. But, um, you know, he's talked about how he's had sheets and it's tough to get things planned and figured out just because they're being used so much. So he, he's really excited about that. We talk a lot about uncommon experiences, um, we've had the ag class cutting hay, raking hay, baling hay, all that stuff. Our computer science class with Mrs. Darnell, um, went to the library and used the CNC machine. And then also she took her class down to the telephone company, which is a unique experience for them, um, being the first, I think we're the fourth town in the whole United States to be fully fiber optic, so, um, very exciting for kids to experience that. Mrs. Thirckle used the vinyl cutter at the Micros Studio and I know she's had kids down there this week, again, today, so, um, using, utilizing that a lot. FFA, FCCLA kicked off, all of them running, FCCLA was in Carney yesterday and today for leadership. FFA will be gone on Wednesday, going to Husker Harvest Days. And I know Mr. Schmidt has a lot of cool assignments for them to utilize while they're down there and, and so they're getting, uh, vital things out of that experience. All activities are all off and running, as you've seen, and then like Mrs. Thompson said, our map testing has started. Not unless this week and next week, we should be finished with it, so that's your secondary.
Sounds busy. So how's the, uh, transportation working with, like FFA and FCCLA, any problems getting drivers to pick them down or that?
Yeah, they, well, they, they pay, it's a, so, uh, I, Renita was able to drive because she just had one van, I don't know how many of them to Husker Harvest Days.
Like twenty?
So that's a bus.
Yeah, thirteen.
So that Chad's going to see, yeah.
Okay.
So that's always, always helpful if you have a few teachers, coaches.
Have to have a chaperone then, so he's driving or not?
I don't know. He's got a mirror.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to make you mad either.
He can just look supervised and drive. You might have to turn around a time or two and wave your finger.
Accidentally run the ditch. Okay, well, thank you too, it's, sounds like you're doing a great job and. You're saving us a little money along the way, so, not that that's the most important thing, but it's always nice to, the two go together. Okay, president's report, I'm going to cut mine short, it's done, superintendent's report.
If you ever, have to actually call that, it's, uh, so I will send that. I'll send out an email tomorrow or message to see who wants to go to September twenty-fifth, uh, area membership meeting with NASB. They were kind of coming through town the other day, stopped for lunch and a few people were coming and had, it was just their tree. They just didn't network to know some of the folks that serve the school board, that's, uh, uh, NASB, he serves the school board. So they have an area meeting in Norfolk on this evening of the twenty-fifth that's open. Uh, so I'll try to confirm who can all attend, that would be good if you could go. Uh, in addition, this is your, your state convention is November twentieth to twenty-second in Omaha. This has been down at the La Vista, at Embassy Suites in La Vista for the past several years, Mindstone a few years, I don't know, Krista, if you've gone. Uh, Vicki's gone, she went last year.
Yes, maybe well, it is worth it.
And they're, they're moving the whole thing to the CHI, so it's going from one end of the city to the other. Uh, but we, we, uh, but they don't have the, they didn't have the lodging out in La Vista for everybody. So we actually stayed at Embassy Suites downtown at the old market and would take a shuttle, which was fine. But they want everybody in one place, so everybody, uh, the whole state, the Hilton and Marriott Capital District, which is the new one just south of the hill, can accommodate the thousands of people that, that attend this conference statewide. And so we'll be at the CHI Center, which is the premier convention center in the state of Nebraska, so, uh, and that's, uh, November twentieth to twenty-second. So that'd be the evening of the twentieth and the evening of the twenty-first, so it'll be a two-night stay, uh, to attend this convention, but it is spectacular. You shouldn't be getting this in the mail, if you're, if your address is on file at NASB, you should get this. If you don't, I'll certainly make a copy of it, you'll be able to, so you have a little bit of time, but please pencil that in. Would love to take the full board, would love to take the full board to this. Uh, it's, it's a tremendous experience, not only for us to go and be immersed in it together as a, as a leadership team for our district. Uh, but this is built for you, this is not built for administrators, it's built for school board members. So, uh, we'll talk more about that, but pencil that in. Uh, it doesn't look like we're going to be offering a close-up opportunity to our kids this year, we just don't have somebody that wants to take it. It's not a school activity, it's not something I can assign to anybody, uh, somebody, I just don't have anybody that feels they want to go through the fundraising during the school year and then take a week and take, you know, anywhere from five to eight to ten to twelve, fifteen kids to Washington for five or six days, so not going to give up on it, that can change in any given year.
Can it be somebody outside the school system?
They can sure do it if they want it.
Didn't Brooke volunteer?
Say again?
Brooke Hurst volunteered that one, I did.
Well, Brooke said something about it, uh, he'll, Brooke will watch this later tonight and home probably tomorrow. So, and, you know, the, I, you know, there's, there are a variety of ways to get kids to Washington DC to experience your, your, your nation's capital. There are a variety of ways, close-up isn't the only way, there are a variety of ways and a variety of times to do it. Eighth grade is kind of traditional year to take kids on a traditional tour of DC, uh, and, you know, and yet, you know, that, that could be an option for us sometimes. We just need somebody that wants to, that wants to do it, because it's a, it's a year-long process to, to plan and fundraise. So anyway, that's just where we're at with that. And gathering information on replacing the bell clock system, our clock, none of our clocks work, they're all off. The bells we have accurate, clocks are not accurate, they can't be fixed. So I'll be bringing that to the, I don't know if it's going to be two thousand or twenty thousand, to be honest with you, but we're checking into, you know, replacing the whole bell tone clock system, we do have to have accurate clocks.
Just to pass the budget, it's a risk.
It's a hassle even, uh, in the elementary when we aren't going by bells and we are going by clocks.
Yeah, elementary comes over here for art and PE and a variety of other things and.
I mean, even over there.
Yeah.
When we're going to and from specials.
Yeah, because the clocks over there are just, I think, atomic clocks and so they should all be, but they're not.
Those all work over there, is what you're saying, that you get over here and they're different?
Oh, no, they don't work.
Oh, they don't work over there?
Even the elementary would benefit from a synchronized system.
Yes.
They all have clocks, you put a battery in and it.
It's, yeah.
They just, yes, because they do a lot of movement over there, teachers trade kids, they go to specials to get, you know, I mean, so it just can be hard to be efficient when you're navigating through the day. So there's your enrollment update, I have not had any meetings out of the district since last month, vacation and sick balance. That is all I have to report.
Any other comments, questions? Well, we are in, thank you all very much.